Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank our administrative staff who came out this evening for some formal introductions to the school committee, some very, very new faces and some faces we know, I won't say old faces, faces that we know in new positions, sorry about that. And I have to tell you that I'm going to say their name and the title of the position they hold, and I'd ask them to come up, and if we don't know too much about them, just give us a quick synopsis of your CV and the others, maybe just a welcome. They all wanted to be first, I have to tell you that. So I'm going to go in the order that we have here. So Tom Plati, the Director of Instructional Technology.
Yes, I clambered through first. My background is a, started out as a science and math teacher and environmental science and chemistry teacher at the high school level. And for the last lot of years, I've been working as a Director of Educational Technology, usually combined with things like curriculum or assessment or libraries in Shrewsbury, in Wellesley, in Hope Dale, and in Lexington. And I had the pleasure about four years ago of being before this group and speaking before you, and I was so impressed with the three or two or three months before that when I went around and talked to the different teachers and administrators, and when a chance came up to apply for this job, I grabbed it because I thought it was a great opportunity because of what I saw there four years ago. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next is Patty Brown, our new Human Resources Director. Thank you, Patty.
Hi. So, I love HR. I've been doing it for nine years. You'll see you have my resume, I believe copies of that. So, I had a first career in music management and spent a lot of years with professional musicians as a manager, also including orchestras like the Boston Symphony Orchestra. And then switched to HR and started in education as an HR Director. That was my first entree into it. And worked for a superintendent's office that had six schools, five different boards of directors. It's a very different structure than Massachusetts. And then went into corporate America and worked in HR for two different corporations, including Boston, the Bose Corporation down the street. So, I've come here from Bose most recently, but I love education and I love HR, so this was a good mix. I also was attracted to Marlboro because of the innovation with your now was STEM, now STEAM program and the diversity, so I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, welcome. John Fletcher was here last year as the Special Education Administrator at the middle school and is now taking the role of Assistant Special Education Director. John?
Good evening, thank you. I don't know, I don't think you have my resume, so just quickly. Originally from Delaware, that'll be the accent that you'll notice from time to time. Served in the Navy for five years, went to the University of Delaware, got my graduate degree from Pittsburgh State University and my doctorate in jurisprudence from Suffolk Law. Was in collaboratives for the most part of my career, about 15 or 16 years. Went to Lexington, had the privilege and honor to work with Mr. Plati for a couple of years there. Did private practice for a year, came back into education, Marlboro. I loved it. Whitcomb was an incredible challenge last year, but I loved every minute of it. When Karen Sturgis decided to announce her retirement and the position was posted, I was excited to apply for it. I was thrilled to get the position, really looking forward to continue to move the district forward. It's been a great time in Marlboro so far, and I think we're really headed in a great direction, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next, we have Josh Torscha, who is the Assistant Principal at Kane Elementary.
Good evening. My experience is primarily in urban education. I worked in the Worcester Public Schools for a number of years as a third and fourth grade teacher, and I worked with a population that was very challenging, very high needs, higher percentage of ELLs. So, I'm excited to make the move to Marlboro and take the jump from teacher to leader.
Thank you, Josh. Welcome.
Josh, you've already made a mark. My daughter came home this afternoon and was very happy to have met Mr. T.
Mr. T. Mr. T. Steve Bishop is newly appointed Marlboro High School Assistant Principal.
I'm the old face you were talking about.
I think so.
I'd like to say that, first of all, good evening. Second of all, today, great day at the high school. Opening was very, very good, went very smooth. I'm glad to be part of the team up with Charlie and Dr. Fitzgerald, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And taking his position as Director of Guidance, six through 12, is another familiar face, Sharon Buckley.
Good evening. I am actually starting my 18th year for Marlboro Public Schools, and in that time, I've served several different roles, starting as a health educator, moving into the guidance arena, and absolutely fell in love with servicing students in that capacity. And while I'm going to miss that direct contact, I am excited at the opportunity of serving more globally in a leadership position and having, hopefully, a profound effect on our students. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sharon. Someone new to the district as well, Cheryl Holliker will be taking Mr. Fletcher's position as the Whitcomb Special Education Administrator.
Hi.
Hi.
Is this thing on? Yes. My name is Cheryl Holliker, and I have most recently been working in Westfield as a special ed supervisor for a high school that's roughly the same size as the middle school here. I have many years of experience in special education as a special ed administrator and as team chair supervisor, so I'm really looking forward to working here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Welcome.
And last but not least, a familiar face for sure, Linda Weintraub, who has been appointed to the role of Systems Administrator.
I'm another old faced. Familiar face. Most of you know who I am, and I would say 1990, I started with bringing my son into the district as the first autistic integrated student in Marlboro Public Schools. We work creative with innovative programs, and since then, as you know, the program has grown and the population that has grown. I was CPAC Chair for 12 years with George Wapum, and we did a lot of volunteering within the schools to help raise disability awareness. And I'd say in the year 2000, I began reporting data to the state, running the state reports. I'm very happy to be in this position right now because of all the new programs. We have Aspen, we have Parent Portal, Student Portal, we have a lot of things to manage, and I'm really looking forward to working with the staff and parents this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you for allowing us to take the time to introduce our new administrators. It is so important that you see a face with a name, and thank you to all of them. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. If not, we won't be upset if you leave.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was the other thing they asked. We have to stay, so, thank you. You can leave in the reverse order of how you presented. Thank you. Continuing on with the report, in your packet is a handout of a letter from NIASC. Brian Daniels, Principal Daniels, has requested and has been granted an extension of the September 1st deadline for the NIASC two-year follow-up. Principals Daniels cited a substantive change in the delivery of instruction for the upcoming year, maintaining that a September 1 report would not serve the commission nor would it be able to provide feedback on the changes that were planned. So, a February 15, 2017 due date was granted based on the fact that it will provide the commission with much more of a meaningful response to the recommendation in the visiting team's report. You can read the letter, but I wanted to highlight as well some of their examples of the continued dedication towards student success as shown by the additional SAC, the addition of a full-time integration specialist, and the new grant-funded transition program. So, again, the letter is in the packet, I wanted to keep you apprised of that. I know that in my contract, it said we didn't need to look at performance goals, and I rethought that and spoke with a few of you. I think that it is important for me to model the goals that are derived from the district goals that were presented yesterday at opening day, which were derived from the work done at the Leadership Retreat and other work done with our administrators. So, for your approval, and if you'd like to ask any questions, there is a copy of a draft included in the handouts, and I, once approved, plan on sharing these with the administrative team to aid them in their goals. So, again, we can have that through line throughout the district. At your place, you also have a copy of a district publication called Transforming Education, MPS Transforming Education. This is the culmination of many months of work on the part of several key contributors in the district. I would like Communications Liaison Beth Wagner to come up and give us just a brief synopsis of how this project came to life. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Good evening. I know you've been hearing about this project for a while, so I thought I'd at least go a little bit into the process by which we did this. It really started in the fall of 2015 when a core committee consisting of the then superintendent, Mrs. Grollick, Mrs. Murphy, Visual Arts Coordinator Julie Baker, STEM Director Dan Riley, Data Consultant Chris Hoddle, and I, met in, to discuss the idea of a district brochure. We brainstormed a list of topics because, and we wanted the publication to be as timeless as possible. We didn't want it to sit on a shelf for a year and then not be useful to the district. So, when we started narrowing the topics, we wanted them to represent how we were transforming education in the Marlboro Public Schools, but also be good for a long period of time if people were to pick it up and look at it a year or two from now. So, we came to five overarching themes plus an introduction for the book. These themes became what we called the pillars of how we were transforming education. And if you'll notice, in the publication, most of the pages have some kind of a pillar graphic on it because we wanted to carry that theme through. We discussed the format, we looked at other publications to mine some ideas, we determined some word counts, we identified people to help write the content, we set some deadlines. Then we looked at photo and graphic elements that could be used in it. We had to identify two to three times as many as we were actually going to need because we didn't know exactly size and so on for these. And it's just a general practice when you're making up a brochure like this to have multiple graphic elements that you can use on any given page. So, what we had, we had, and what we didn't, I went out and took a lot of photos. We collected all of the written content, we pared it down, we rearranged it for clarity and consistency with the pillar topic areas. Then we sent out multiple drafts to everybody who was involved for review and feedback, and we had, we did that several times. And once a final draft was determined, we looked at which photograph and graphic elements we wanted to have with those areas, and we also looked at the use of what are QR codes. So, there are like five or six QR codes embedded in this document, and if you take a reader and you look on that QR code, it's going to bounce you to an internet site that will talk more about the topic that's on the page. I contacted a Marlboro graphic designer who was recommended by several people to me to do the layout and design work. We did three different proof reviews, and last week, we were delivered our print versions of the final product. I would like to take the opportunity to thank everybody who made this document possible. Former Superintendent Richard Langloes had the vision for it, and he wrote the introduction to the document. Julie Baker spearheaded the Visual and Performing Arts, Educating the Whole Child section, which is, starts on page five. Also, thanks to Jonathan Rosenthal and Shannon McNulty for their assistance with this section as well. Mary Murphy and Dan Riley did most of the work on Innovation and Design section, which begins on page seven. Chris Hoddle and I also contributed to the content of this area. Several people contributed to the Lifetime of Learning section, which begins on page 11. Andy Bernaby, Dan Riley, Steve Bishop, Toby Peterson, and I produced most of the content, but we consulted with many of our colleagues about specific programmatic information. And finally, I am responsible for the Global Connections section, which begins on page 15. And it was a truly collaborative effort. All who involved felt very, very committed to what we were trying to do and how we were trying to say everything, and I think that the brochure itself really speaks well of what we, as a district, are trying to be and what we are trying to become. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but enjoy the brochure.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Sensi.
Actually, just a compliment, I think this is great.
Thank you.
So, congratulations to everyone that really touched it because, I'm sorry, but as an advertising and marketing professional, I think this is critical.
Thank you.
To have something like this along with some of the conversation that you've had about updating the website, if we want to be treated professionally and thought of in a very professional manner, you need to present yourself this way, and kudos to all of you for having the vision and doing it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Beth.
My next item is a handout, which is entitled, "The 2015-2016 Summit of Evaluation Data", and this speaks to the data from last school year. It is accounted by staff by broad category of those who were evaluated, in addition to the percentages of ratings in the various categories of exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. And it's broken down, again, in very broad categories so that it is still confidential data. Based on the evaluation last year, around the four standards, for this upcoming school year, we have five staff members on a directed growth plan and three on an improvement plan. And finally, I'd like to talk about the Leadership Retreat, which seems so long ago now, but it was only last Monday and Tuesday. On the first day, we spent the entire day at Jericho Hill Recreation Center. The mayor came to give a greeting. We looked at our preliminary state testing data, we set district goals in more fine-tuned fashion, and we explored some of our shifting demographics and strategies to reach all learners. We had a DESI data person named Joe Wyman, who we worked with, who did a wonderful job for us. We also had a potluck team dinner that day cost us zero because the next day, we spent a little bit, but actually, when I calculated the cost, it was less than the two days that we used to spend off-site with food at Special Olympics. So, what we did on the second day was take the team by coach to Boda Borgen, Malden, where we engaged in questing activities in which teams entered themed rooms to solve puzzles of a mental and physical nature, and we were mostly frustrated because advancing to the next room was near impossible. We debriefed. It wasn't just a fun day. We debriefed and talked about how important it is to distribute leadership in a team, to find our place on a team, and how what we did together assembling as a group, forming, norming, storming, and performing on the fly, how that can have a transfer effect to what we do in the workplace. It was an awesome day. And finally, I would like to say, Day One today was partially successful based on the help of John Galoney, Chief Leonard, and other city officials for work that was done over the summer, as well as help with the parking lot and the ensuing complicating factors with busing and transportation because of that. But Mr. Bergeron was around at all the schools today, I was around at two of them, and it went very well, so we want to thank them. And also, always, the custodians make the school sparkle for Day Ones. We want to thank them as well. That concludes my report.
Any questions on the report?
I think you missed number five.
Oh, I'm sorry. How could I have missed that? It may be because it has to do with immunizations. We now have an immunization clinic up and running with the Marlboro Board of Health. We're so pleased to be able to collaborate with them. They provide a nurse, it's at the Whitcomb Parent and Outreach Center, and what we had been hearing previously is that translations were not available where they were having these immunization clinics at Walker Building, and it was taking up to 45, 50 minutes, maybe even an hour, per family to work through all of the details of it. So, having translators on-site that we provide makes for a beautiful collaboration. The first clinic was held on August 24.
Ms. Bowden Hedinger.
Thank you, and I would like to make a personal thanks for setting this up. I work at the Free Medical Program in Sudbury, and we get new families in all the time that are coming, and they have all their transcripts, and the kids need to get immunized, and a lot of times, the places where they have the immunizations aren't open at times that the families can go. So, it's really great that it's going to be one-stop shopping now for folks. It's great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Sensi.
Sorry, I cast, I'll have a list here. Thank you for the information about the NIASC to your report. I guess my hope would be that, is it possible that we could have Mr. Daniels come, say, late fall, early winter, when he's obviously moved forward with some of the preparations, so we can kind of get a little bit of a looksee as to where things have gone, as opposed to kind of waiting until right before the date or after the fact?
I'm sure we can work that.
You know?
Yep.
Late November, early December, something like that. So, it gives him, obviously, timeframe on working on it. And I wanted to thank you in regards to the goals. We'd had a conversation, I think it is really important to have that modeling. I was pleased to see that we're looking at the migration of the website. I know that Beth has made mention of it a number of times, and I think that's great to look at making that changeover.
Okay.
I think one thing that I picked up on that I thought was really great was, within the first few weeks of school, provide each teacher a data dashboard of pertinent information on each student. I think that's awesome. So, I think that's great to see something like that be your goal, which I would hope then, obviously, then the other administrators would then pick up on how important that is to make sure that information is shared. You know, we had had that discussion around MTSs on sharing all of the, you know, all of the factoids that you can get so that you can have a better picture and a quicker picture?
Early.
Early. That being the key thing. So, that I was really pleased to see. And as well, pleased to see the movement forward of a technology plan where we really have not.
Yes.
We've done a huge amount technology-wise, so not to take away from what has been accomplished, but really moving it forward in a cohesive manner, I think is really important. So, was really pleased to see that in here and wanted to compliment you on those things. And appreciate the evaluation data as well, because I think, as you know specifically because you've been right in the heart of all of the evaluation discussion, massively important for anyone to have feedback, and I think the more feedback that we can continue to give to folks, the better that we all are going to be. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Minutes of the August 15, 2016 Special Meeting.
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I was not at the meeting, I will abstain from voting on the minutes, but I did notice, I believe, in item five, Bravo, it references our next scheduled meeting of August 31. It's actually tonight, August 30. But I will abstain from voting on the minutes.
As amended.
Motion made, seconded to approve as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation? Seeing none, personnel update?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tried to give just a different look at the personnel update. I'm only giving you the open positions right now, because the past few months, we looked at all the positions at once, but I just wanted to break it down, just to show you what's still open as of the first day of school. We have 19 openings on the sheet, nine of them are behavior technician positions, which I actually, from the time that I've actually given you this, I've already had two emails from principals appointing people. So, this is a moving very quickly to close on some of these. Some of them have been very, very, very late resignations that we are working to fill, and some of them have just been tough positions that we are trying very hard to get. For example, like the Mandarin position is just a tough position to get in Massachusetts, it's very competitive, and we're doing everything we can to get a candidate. So, right now, we have 19 openings, and we are trying to fill them as quickly as possible.
Any questions? Ms. Sensi.
The Mandarin teacher, that was definitely something that popped out to me because that's not exactly like you can find an easy long-term sub until you find a person. Curious as to what is trying.
All sections.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I don't.
Right. So, we did secure a Mandarin Chinese teacher, and then in the middle of the summer, she told us that she had taken a position somewhere else. So, we were back to the drawing board, and they actually have a candidate, and we're waiting, we're waiting for some visas and so on to catch up. Until then, we are creatively thinking with Principal Calery how to fill that.
Okay. So, at the moment, somebody potentially that's internally there, like I think Mrs. Matthews was suggesting is going to cover all the sections.
She is. She's covering, yes.
Okay.
Of her volition.
Yeah.
And she taught six last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's great that she can and/or will, but.
We have a date soon, we're hoping, that that will end.
Okay. And the other thing that definitely jumped out, other than the number of behavioral technicians, was the fifth grade teacher. Are we dealing with a long-term sub at this point until we get somebody, or?
It was a very late resignation.
Yeah.
So, it's, we're actually going to be posting the position and looking for a teacher as quickly as possible.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Superintendent's Performance Goals.
Thank you. So, I'm looking for approval of these goals, and certainly would entertain any questions that you have or comments, because as I mentioned a bit ago, I would like to share these with the team at Central Office, as well as principals and other leaders in the development of their own goals.
It's a pleasure.
Well, I just want to say that it's for a one-year position, you, in fitting Mrs. Grollick, befits your work ethic to take on so many tasks. Great, I appreciate, I appreciate the work. Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Well, accept, yeah.
Thank you.
Accept and place on file. Okay.
School Committee Secretary.
We're up to that already?
Ms. Bowden Hedinger.
Okay.
You all have, are you lifting on this?
Well. Yes. Yes. So, basically, I kind of roused it up about 40 different job descriptions from around the state, and kind of cut and pasted and put together a very draft form, which you should have all gotten today. Did everyone get it? I have an extra copy if somebody needs it. So, basically, I think we just need to, and of course, we would like our new HR Director to take a look, because I cut and pasted it from everybody else. That's permissible, isn't it? No need to reinvent the wheel. So, I mean, the bottom line is, most people who do this job, it is embedded in the position that is the assistant to the superintendent. There are a few districts that have their own, but it's pretty unusual. So, I think that this person, who will be part-time, will be working in conjunction with the Superintendent's Secretary pretty closely, at least in the beginning, because there are a lot of systems that are already in place, things that we have to do, that we have been doing, that Mrs. Sibilio is doing, and will transfer over to this new person. But then, there are a number of things that, that we would like some assistance in particularly around subcommittees and minute-taking and minute processing, and extra help with the policy manual, which Mrs. Hennessy has done yeoman's work keeping up with. So, that is the purpose for it, as well as embedding the note-taking responsibilities that our fearless clerk, who keeps coming back even though she quit. So, that will all be embedded in this position. So, I, again, just kind of tried to capture the things that we know need to be done, and so I'm looking for feedback, wordsmithing, anything. I'm not married to this in any way, other than getting us started.
The only comments I have is, first of all, should we be changing secretary? I don't know how many secretaries there are on the school side. I don't think we have any on the city side. They're clerks, they're administrative assistants, you know, so I don't know if, you know, it's like hiring a clerk typist.
I basically took Patty Sibilio's job description and changed it from superintendent to school committee, so.
I guess I would like to get feedback. I guess I would like to get feedback back to Ms. Bowden-Hendinger as soon as possible, only to try to move this along so we can get an approval at the next meeting. And so any feedback we have, we can get over to her. Like I said, I'd like to hear back from Ms. Brown on her comments on the whole thing. I did have a couple of comments from the HR director on the city side, but if we could get those comments over as quick as possible, so we can get this moving. So, because I would like to get it approved and posted the day after the next school committee meeting. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I'll give you some feedback in addition to what I had already sent you. The only thing, when I was searching it too, as you said, it's usually the superintendent's admin who's doing it. But if it was its own position, it was a point five, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's not a full-time job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then the only thing I'll throw out there to ruminate on is, given our demographics, do we want to put in the qualifications a preference for bilingual, Spanish or Portuguese, because there could be some interaction, you know, receiving complaints and all that from citizens. It says with respect to number fourteen. So that was what sort of popped out in my mind, is listing maybe a preference, not a requirement, but a preference. But you can all debate.
All right, so everyone get their comments, concerns back, and we'll get it approved at the next meeting. Thank you. Policy acceptances. Mrs. Policy.
So, thank you all. So you have a number of policies before you. I apologize that there was a little bit of a change that was needed on one that was sent to you today, but it was highly important, as I have had explained in the previous meeting, but as well clarify again tonight. We had a new bill from the state, all-around opioid policy, and they had wanted to push forward that we needed to execute before the beginning of the school year. We've done what we could to put something together. Hence why you have a new version that came today, because there was some feedback from our nurse that, our head nurse, that came to me very last minute. But it was important to make sure that we had the wording changes. So unfortunately, that's why you needed to get something new today. Mild changes, but important ones. So let's start at the top with the resignation policy, policy six point one four zero. Hopefully, you have your, I would say redline version, but it's nice color coded with yellow and black strikeout. Sorry. I won't be your clerk. So you've had a chance to review. I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the policy, as noted with the changes in front of you.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't at the eight fifteen meeting, so I apologize if some of this was discussed already, but in reviewing six point one four for tonight, I came across the question of, do we currently employ anyone pursuant to no contract, no written contract? Is there anyone in the district that is employed without a written contract? Strikes me as somewhat risky for both sides.
You don't have any non-union employees that do not have contracts.
The behavior techs didn't, but now they're unionized, right?
We do have some employees that we have working conditions for, but not a written contract. They get an appointment letter and then a set of working conditions, which outlines, you know, leave, anything like that.
And then, so this six point one four would be aimed at them, obviously, because we've amended it to remove the contracted employees and the CBA employees then.
All of our, all of our employees with individual contracts have specific breakout clauses in their contracts.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Your motion for, to go by policy or to accept them all at once?
We need to go by policy, please.
On, and we're doing the.
So this one is six point one four zero.
Six point one four resignation.
Yeah.
On the motion made and seconded to approve resignation policy six point one four, all those in favor? Posed, carries. Seven point one nine.
Thank you. So seven point one nine, which you have in front of you, which is the athletic transportation fee. So as noted, there is a yellow line as to what the change was. As you will know during our budget discussions, the athletic fee was removed from our budget. So, hence the change. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward on accepting the changes as amended.
Motion made and seconded to approve policy seven point one nine as presented. Any discussion? Mrs. Matthews.
So going back to my question on the fifteenth, I don't think it belongs here anymore. I think it needs to be just taken out. So I don't see a necessity for a placeholder. But I was under the impression, actually, that you were going to check legally if we needed a placeholder or not, so.
I'm sorry. I didn't take it as I needed to check legally.
I mean, we talked about this in our subcommittee meeting, and we were concerned that if we got into a tight budget year, that we might have to re-implement it, and we didn't want to have to go back and write another policy.
And I think actually, when we had those discussions too, we actually had a recognition where we discussed again that the fee that we were charging was exceptionally minimal in comparison to many other districts around us and across the state. We had one of the lowest. So we might, we might at some point have to, even though the situation was that it was, I think, like thirty or forty thousand that we were bringing in at most because of our population.
And that, and that was why I asked the question.
Yeah.
You're going to have to write a new policy. If you just, if we, or whomever, whenever it happens, you're going to have to write a new policy if you go forward with fees. So just by, this is forcing you, this is now forcing you to review it every year.
Why do we have to go forward and make a new policy if we decide, we don't have a policy that says we don't have any fees? So why would we have to make a policy if we were adding back in fees? If we have a placeholder, the policy is already there. We're just choosing to not use it this year.
There would, I think there would be no need for an amendment if next year we decided to implement the fees that are currently in the policy. If we implemented something other than fifty dollars per sport and a hundred fifty dollars per academic year, then we would have to amend it next year.
We'd have to amend it.
If we, and if we decide not to charge fees next year, we would also have to amend it.
Correct. The carve-out by its terms is limited to just this academic year. So if we revert back to charging fees, I'm opposed to it, because I, during the discussion, I said we shouldn't, in this budget year particularly, we shouldn't be waiving any fees. But I agree that the carve-out by its terms is limited to this academic year. So if we wanted to reassess the fees next year and beyond, we wouldn't need to enact a new policy.
Correct. But then, next, going into the seventeen, eighteen, if we don't address the policy, does the policy lapse?
Yeah, well, we will, we will need to address this each year, and I think more or less, you know, from our discussion around budgets, we may have to anyway. Just, just based on, we may need that money. And I think also, our population can continue to change, which we're going to need to assess, just like we do with school choice or whatever. Every single year, we have certain things that are going to be coming around. So I see your point. I very much recognize Mr. Walter's point, because I was right with you on that, on that vote. But I think this was, I think, coming around to, we're going to have to take each year and that amount of money, if you will, as it comes, because there are a lot of factors that could be changing each and every year of not knowing what the city has in front of it from a dollar standpoint.
And just don't forget, as the mayor said, if we choose to waive fees again next year, we would need to.
We'll just have to change the date.
Memorialize that, yeah.
Would it, would it help if we changed the last section to read, the school committee may waive fees for any, any year prior to the beginning of school, something?
Then it wouldn't be tied to a year, and we wouldn't have to change it every year.
Right.
As long as we waive it.
Based on budget, right. The vote during the budget process.
Yeah.
Well, you could, you could phrase it, the school committee reserves the right by majority vote to waive all athletic and transportation fees by, in subsequent school years.
Yeah.
And again, put in by majority vote. Right, exactly. Something verbiage of that you could, you could put in.
And one of my concerns is, we always, there's a list of policies we're, we're all supposed to address every year, and we forget. Because we don't have the asterisks on the book.
We're just so far behind.
Right. No, exactly. No, I mean, and I'm not saying it's all.
Policy after policy.
Right.
And the reality is, if we vote to waive fees, I could hardly believe we're going to get a complaint from anybody.
No, right, exactly.
Whether it's memorialized or not, but to be, to be within the letter of the law and our rights, we may want to add a line indicating that we reserve the right by majority vote to waive all such fees in future years.
Right. And I think we should be talking about it every year.
Oh, I don't disagree.
Agree that we shouldn't have to go back and change the policy every year.
Right.
As the chair.
Okay. I'm just trying to write something down quickly.
Mr. Walter, would you like to repeat the?
Am I a lawyer?
Yeah, I have something written down that, you know, strike the beginning of the, for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen year. Just start with, the athletic transportation fee will be waived and all athletic costs.
The school committee reserves the right by majority vote.
Whatever he says.
To waive all athletic associated fees.
Can I read what I had, just, just for giggles? How about, the athletic transportation fee will be waived and all athletic costs that, that this covered will be handled with the operational budget pending school committee review during the budget each year. So.
Do you need majority vote in there?
Well, we would, we would be potentially examining it within the parameters of the annual budget, but I'm not sure you need to reference that. We just want to put something in that says, look, if we elect to waive these fees in the future, we'll do so.
Right. We don't do anything unless it's a majority vote, so I don't think you have to state that.
You don't even need to do that, exactly.
I'm good with any of them. The spirit's there for all of them, so.
School committee may waive the athletic transportation fee in any academic year. It elects, something like that.
Short and sweet.
The elects could do so, right.
Sure.
You good?
That's fine. You can write that up for me. Make sure we have the right thing, okay?
Motion made and seconded to approve seven point one nine as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed, carries. Seven point one nine A.
Okay. Moving right along. So implementation, basically, we were looking to remove this. So this is asking for your approval to remove. So I'd like to make a motion to remove policy seven point one nine zero A, implementation.
Motion to delete seven point one nine zero A. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed, carries. Policy eight point oh one two five.
Okay. Just to make sure I have the right one. Okay, so this one is the substance abuse prevention and abuse education. And I'd like to make a motion to move forward as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve as presented.
Education. This isn't the one that got amended. Okay, sorry. That's why I was just looking up.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me second that. Yeah, that's what I thought it was too. It was not the one that was amended today.
No, this, this was as-is.
Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor? Posed, carries. Policies eight point oh one three.
Okay, thank you. So policy eight point zero one three, which is the administration of medicine in the Marlboro Public Schools. I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended.
Motion made and seconded to approve as amended. Any discussion?
So if I can then speak to these points, just to make sure you are aware, what wears and whys. On page, excuse me, page two, you will see on number four, where it's the medication administration daily log form. I was informed by Mary that they keep these forms by electronic health record. It is not by, in a hardbound folder, which is what was initially suggested by previous, you know, previously in the policy of substance and administration. That's not how it's been kept. It is now electronic. The only time it would ever be hardbound is literally if the system is down and they can't get to something, and then it is reinput then, as soon as they get access to the electronic. So everything is electronic. So that's why she had asked for that changed, and that would be maintained by the nurse. It's not maintained by anybody else. It doesn't go elsewhere. It's kept within the nurse. Number five, she had asked for nurse leader to be added in there in addition to nurse's room. And then later on, on that page, you also see in blue where it is in the section about field trips. Sometimes there are LPNs that are assigned, not just an RN. So again, she was hoping for that to be a licensed nurse, allowing for the latitude. And then on page three, similarly, under number six A, you'll see once again licensed nurse, because it allows for the latitude of the certification of the nurse that might be assigned. So those were the additional areas that came to this afternoon. Yeah, I made the motion already.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Discussion. Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So excuse my ignorance, but there's a difference between a licensed nurse and a registered nurse?
Yes, because it's not a registered, like a registered nurse, an RN, it's an LPN. There are other versions and other certifications. So by saying licensed nurse, it allows for the breadth of licenses that we may need to have within the nursing staff.
But then why limit ourselves to just one type of nurse? Why not speak in the alternative, drafted in the form of licensed nurse and/or registered nurse, or licensed nurse or registered nurse?
Licensed nurse actually allows for all of the nursing.
Oh, okay.
It's called an LPN, a licensed practical nurse versus an RN. So by saying a licensed nurse, that's all encompassing.
You've answered my question. Perfect. And then.
That one's a weird one.
Number five, I'm sorry, what's the letter? B Bravo five? Medication error report form, when used, will be kept on file in the nurse's room. And then it seems like parentheses nurse leader, closed parentheses. It seems like the term nurse leader is just dropped in there somewhat randomly. It doesn't seem to flow.
I'm having a hard time seeing.
Page two. That's Mary's edit.
Yeah, so that's six, right? No?
No, it's five.
Like, what are we saying about the nurse leader there?
She just wants to add it, so you need to make it into a sentence, though.
But it, you know, I mean, is it just so that we, that she knows that the nurse's room is a nurse leader?
And clarity, I'll look over the superintendent, asking if you can help me with any clarity there, but my understanding is that in some buildings where there may be more than one nurse, there is a nursing leader, and so it would be within that person's area? Help me.
I think that it means all medical errors go.
I think that it means all medical errors go to her as nurse leader, and she keeps them in the one locked box. I actually had a conversation with her today, but if we go back to the email she sent, that might be clarified. I'll try to find it.
So maybe we would add some language, the effect of to be maintained by the nurse leader or something like that? It just still seems like the term nurse leader is out of place. It's just dropped in there sort of randomly.
I think she meant to replace it. That's what I, I'm thinking.
Okay, so when used, will be kept on file in the?
With the nurse leader.
Or with the nurse leader.
With the nurse leader?
That would make sense.
Well, kept filed in the nurses' room and with the nurse leader. That implies that they're still keeping a file, because Mary is not at JAR. If something happens at JAR, they keep a copy at JAR and they give a copy to Mary.
According, if I could read from her email, the number five, medication era, I have kept a copy of the eras as well in a locked area. You may want to add nurse leader, so it's as well. She keeps them in addition to the building.
In the nurses' room and nurse leader would be appropriate.
So, and with the nurse leader. Okay. Thank you. So, as amended.
Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Uh, nine point five.
Um, so, nine point five. This is the public relations, the current public relations policy, where we then added in communications on here. There are a few changes, as you will note, and I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended.
Motion made and seconded to approve as amended. Any discussion?
Go ahead, let Mark go first.
It's one sentence long. How many amendments could we possibly have?
I, I can tell you. I, I made a comment about this at a July meeting, I think. What is the purpose of this policy? Why on the earth is this our bailiwick? Why do we need to be reviewing and updating an annual plan of communication when we hire more than capable, more than qualified people? I mean, if we want to learn about what we are doing from a communications perspective, why can't we ask the SCCC to annually come to us and present information, much like we do with the special ed director or Ms. Murphy or Ms. Gruelik? I don't think we need to be doing this, and this policy should be wiped from the books. And if that is the appetite of the committee, I'll make a motion to abolish nine point five from the books. I don't want to do this every year. My two cents.
We're going to abolish this.
I, I'm right there with Mark, especially because if, the subheading of this is "School, Community, and External Agency Relations", which is a policy that, how do we talk to the press? How do we talk to outside organizations? We don't.
You're looking at me like I made this thing.
No, I, I mean.
Look at when it was established.
And if we're hiring an SCCC, the SCCC should be doing it.
I was graduating college, so, good luck to them.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Um, no, because he already did, I think.
He said he was going to. He didn't actually do it.
I would love for him to do it.
All right.
Are you abolishing it?
A friendly, uh?
I'll, I'll accept his friendly little amendment.
I will move to abolish, strike from the books, remove entirely policy nine point five zero zero from the Marlboro School Committee policy books.
Motion to abolish policy number five, nine point five, to never return. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Acceptance of donations and gifts.
No, oh, yeah.
No?
No, sorry, no, sorry. I'm in the wrong packet now because I'm having to go back and forth.
First congressional church in memory of Katie Mahoney. Fifty-four backpacks to be distributed to students in K through four, twenty-four hundred dollars.
Motion to accept with great thanks.
Motion to accept with great thanks. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. DMT Acne United Corporation, two thousand pairs of scissors and one thousand rulers, twenty-five hundred dollars.
I will make a motion to approve with gratitude.
Motion made and seconded to approve with gratitude. And I know we just finished the Olympics, and DMT is famous for their shopping tools for our speed skaters. They provide the shopping tools for, that, that's, while the new company is getting into different things. DMT was just bought, so Acne is getting them into different things. They are not leaving Marlboro.
It'll be by the bowling alley.
Oh, my dead heart.
Yeah, it's a Marlboro company.
Motion made and seconded to approve with gratitude. All those in favor? Pose, carries. Reports of committees. Oh, sure.
Uh, the School Building Committee, which consists of, I think, eleven people, met at the beginning of August, and there is a request for service out. The applications for project management firm, who will be doing the feasibility study at Richard, are due, I think, tomorrow, the thirty-first, so, um, the interviews will take place in September with a subcommittee, which are awesome ones. So we'll report back after the interviews.
I actually have a question, not about that, but about what kind of conver, ongoing conversations are going on regarding space in the meantime?
That was the other committee.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't taken that up since we had our meeting prior. It was discussed that we would be able to, you know, get through this year without any issues whatsoever. Let me change that.
I don't think that's exactly how it was presented.
Without serious issues, we definitely have an, you know, space issue and, and, you know, so we will be gathering back together to, you know, after we get our numbers after Jan, October first, we can take a look, see where everyone's situated, and go from there, so. Anyone else? Ms. Tennessee?
Um, sorry, I was waiting for members forum. I apologize. I jumped.
Oh, you don't have any reports?
Um, I think I did a lot there, so.
All right. Members forum. Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. Um, I actually wanted to say thank you so much for an incredible opening day. You know, the, everything was great. The man that came to speak was really inspirational, and I heard from a lot of staff members that really, really appreciated what he had to say and having them think about things, many things that they already are doing, but just thinking about it in a different way. So he was absolutely fantastic. And kudos for that, and glad to hear day one went well.
Ms. Matthews?
Thank you for the enrollment report. The one, one thing that I would like to see, that I was really more concerned with, was our breakdown by class size, especially in the elementaries, that were, that report we used to get. Because that is, going back to the mayor's comment regarding space, I know we have a, a few bursting-at-the-seams issues.
I wasn't sure what you wanted.
Yeah, sorry.
That's what you had. That's, welcome to, uh, I'll send this to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, sorry. Um, so, I just want to review that, aside from the subcommittees that we have internally with the school committee, there are a number of subcommittees that are district subcommittees that some of us participate in. As in MTSS, you do, right? I do evaluation. Do you do something? Anyone else do something? Oh, yeah, you do the school building stuff. Um, I, I just wanted to put out to Ms. Gruelik, we should assess the subcommittees within the district that you are overseeing. And if there are other ones that it makes sense to have a school committee member present, we, I would like to say we'd be open to it, or at least open to the conversation and see if people are interested. And also, you know, if anyone else has a burning desire to do evaluation, they, you know, I wouldn't be opposed. I love that committee, I, you know, but I don't want to hog all the good times, you know, if anyone else was interested. So, as things are coming together for the school year.
The, the three you mentioned, I think, are the three I would also highlight. MTSS, PD, and evaluation.
PD is the other one.
PD, we don't have anybody on right now.
We don't have somebody on.
We, we started, Ms. Murphy and I and several others, this year really in earnest, working with, and Rupel was on that as well. Were you, Rupel? Yes. Uh, working to take a look at PD, not necessarily what we're doing on March fifteenth, but more, you know, the philosophy behind the different levels of professional development. So I, I would welcome someone on that committee. I think it would be great. So it's up to you if you want to switch. How you want to take care of your assignments is completely up to you. But those would be the three, at this point, that we would welcome participation from the school committee.
Sorry, what were they, MTSS? Oh, yeah, okay, I thought there were three new ones.
No, no, just, yeah, no.
You write that?
I'm all good now.
And if anything else comes up in the next, you know, few months, we can think about that as well. But I, at this point, I don't foresee that. Those are three that are very consistent.
To that, um, it actually is a citywide. There's a, my understanding, having read something, and I don't remember where it was.
Stop reading it, all right?
I know. There's supposed to be a citywide health and wellness that the school committee, a member is supposed to participate on?
That's the, uh, is that the one Karen used, Karen's on it? What's it called? SWAC. I knew it had something to do with like smooch or something. I didn't want to mess it up. Is that the one?
No, it, it, no, there's another, it's.
There were a number of them.
Karen, does that involve?
There, there are community, community members that.
Yeah, see, this one, I think, is driven by the city that we're supposed to participate in.
You send me that information and I'll take a look at it.
Okay. Actually, Nick has it already because I, I sent an email a couple of months ago when we got a, we got an email about opening.
You sent me about the building committee.
This is the substance abuse, sure. There were a number, no, there were a number of positions on whatever that list was, and I apologize.
Karen Boulais, I brushed that, I think.
But there were, right, oh, that's right. It was Karen Boulais.
Karen sent it.
Right, but what I did was, I did send that back to Nick then to say, number one, sorry, but I had an interest in whatever, one of the things. And didn't we need to then look at having a school committee member on the, the positions that seemed to be open, that needed to have school committee representation? And I think there were like three, I think there were like three different city groups, whatever.
We'll send the mayor any.
We're actually going through the list right now to find out which ones we can abolish. We're trying to abolish as many as possible.
Music to my ears.
So, Mark will be on the abolition committee.
I like that.
And Mike wants a law committee to abolish.
Anything not required is going to be abolished. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I remembered my question. Mrs. Murphy, may I ask you a question about your presentation earlier on?
I haven't taken the test yet. It's not out yet, but that's a great question.
So, in the, um, in the work that the state's been doing leading up to the two point O and implementation, I know that feedback that I had been reading was that there was a pretty substantial difference in how well the students did on the test for computer-based versus pen and paper-based. Is that being taken into any consideration in the implementation going to the computer base?
So, they're looking at the format of both of those assessments. I don't know, they're looking at the data as well because we're trying to interpret the scale scores and then switch them to MCAS scores, and then see how Park is reported and how MCAS is. I think our issue is going to be that the state is trying to design an assessment that is more MCAS-like. But MCAS and Park as an assessment are two completely different things. MCAS is an, uh, I mean, you know, is a feat of endurance. It went on for days and days and days. Park was not designed that same way. So there are concerns with educators that will have a Park-like assessment that will actually be an endurance assessment as well. So I, I think it's way too early to see where we land on it.
And they'll change it so we don't have a track like it anywhere, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not going to count again this year.
Right, because it's hard to, it's hard to know with Park if the, if it's the test that was too hard for the kids, or if it was the change to the computer that was too hard. So if you can take an MCAS and do it on the computer, then it's apples to apples.
And they, they had better luck comparing the two assessments when it was a fifty-fifty. But when you have three-quarters of your districts taking Park and then only a quarter doing MCAS, because the rules were changed so drastically, and it's really hard to evaluate what the numbers mean. Which is, you know, it's sad, but it also gives us the experience of taking that online assessment and a student seeing what the future was going to be, that was very valuable to us.
Yeah, and then my other, you know, adjunct to that question is the whole, you know, not to get into a political discussion, but the whole common core aspect to it. So, we have Massachusetts Common Core.
Right.
Can I make the assumption that Mass, that MCAS two point O is going to be a test of the Massachusetts Common Core standards?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. For social studies, sorry.
But that's all right. We haven't been assessing sos, right.
Should be. Okay.
Is there anything else that we discussed tonight that we would like to discuss?
Again, does anyone misremember something from earlier in the meeting? I'm a little slow sometimes.
I just, sorry, I just have one request at the start of the new year. Can we make sure that the information to parents, like the morning announcements on the WICOM page and the daily bulletin, they just are updated on a consistent basis? I don't know who does it.
Well, that goes back to the ownership under the SCCC.
Emailing the person who takes care of that right now. Thank you.
Entertainer motion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Pose, carries.